The April 15th meeting of the Newmarket Town Council to order. I'm going to ask our town manager, Steve Fournier, to take it from here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Chair of the Town Council, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, the Town Council is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there's no physical location, observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are, A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the GoToMeeting platform for this electronic meeting. All of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the GoToMeeting platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, 1-866-899-4679, and the access code is 664-197-525, or by clicking the following web address, We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting by using GoToMeeting and instructions provided on the town of Newmarket's website at www-newmarketnh.gov. And we're providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please call 603-659-3617, extension 1321. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at another time. Votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. We're going to start the meeting by taking a roll call for attendance. But I ask each member of the council to state their presence. Also, please state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required on the right to know law. So I'll start with Counsel Finch.
Present, and there is nobody in the room with me.
Counsel Sanders.
I am present, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Counsel Dumont is absent. Counsel Kuiper.
I'm here, and I am alone.
Counsel Matthews.
Present, and no one around.
Counsel Burns.
Present, and I am alone.
Counsel Weinstein.
Also present, and no one is here. Thank you.
And I'll turn back over to the Chair.
Great. So our first item of business is the public forum, and I'm assuming that there's no one from the public. Not sure how.
But if anybody would like to contact the council, they could email me, sfornier@newmarketnh.gov, and we'll share the communications with the council.
Thank you. The next item of business is for the Town Council to consider the acceptance of minutes from our April 1st, 2020 meeting. I've got a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 1st, 2020 meeting.
Second.
At this point, I guess I should probably just say that if anyone wants to make a change or has a comment about anything moving forward now with the agenda, if people want to, you know, you can obviously say something or wave, and I will do my best to try and make sure that everyone is seen. So, one way or another, we will make sure that your voices are heard. So seeing no comments at this point, Town Manager, if you want to call the roll. Oh, sorry. Counsel Matthews.
All right, putting that in there. Just two things. Page 1, line 10, if they could just update it from Counselor Chris to Counselor Christian. And then page 6, line 232, I think it should be "emergency" instead of "emergent."
I'm not sure whose feedback that is. Okay.
Are we okay?
I think so.
Okay.
So if there are no other concerns, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont. Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Matthews.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
So the next item is the Town Manager's report. So, Steve.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item I want to discuss is, as everybody's been seeing, the Governor's been issuing a number of emergency orders, and one of the recent ones that have impacted municipalities is what they're referring to as Emergency Order Number 25, which is a blanket abatement on interest for taxes. As part of the efforts to relieve for individuals who are impacted by the pandemic, Governor Sununu issued an emergency order number 25, which allows me to issue a blanket abatement on interest and penalties for any property taxes that are owed during this emergency. So basically, it's a situation where we could issue a blanket abatement for anybody's taxes, that they wouldn't have to have any penalties on interest or they wouldn't have the penalties. There are a number of questions on how this is going to apply for the property tax bills. First, is that if we issue the bills on July 2nd, and the emergency is over, can they still receive the relief? So, there's a number of questions there, and a lot of the municipalities are saying the same thing, that we're not recommending that we grant a blanket abatement on interest and penalties for everybody. While there will be many individuals who are facing hardships, there actually will be those who aren't. A lot of people pay this already through their mortgage, and that's already been paid. And what we're going to do, and I don't know if you saw what we released today, is that we're coming up with a clearance house now for how the town can help people in need in the community. We're calling it "New Market Together." It's on the website, and it's, what we're going to do is we're going to list all the agencies and all ways that people can contact us if they need assistance. We will look at abatements on interest and penalties on a case-by-case basis, so we do encourage those who need it to contact us. And the information is on the town website, and we're going to get out more information as we can. The next item is, I placed a hiring freeze on all seasonal employees at this time. I'm also only allowing for the hiring of essential personnel until the pandemic is over. And for the fiscal year 20 budget, after reviewing the February expense and revenue reports and with the pandemic, I'm asking department heads to continue to limit spending. With 66% of the year completed at the end of February, we've expended 72% of the budget. We continue to see overages in finance and IT due to the change in personnel at the end of the shared service agreement with the schools. We're also seeing overages in public works, fire, Channel 13, environmental services. Revenues are also slightly lower than we were last year. While we're slightly above where we were for motor vehicle registrations year-on-year, we need to consider the delay that we will see in registrations until the end of the pandemic. Also, building permits were lower than the previous year at the end of February, and those have all but dried up since the pandemic. I'll continue to monitor the budget, and we'll adjust operations accordingly. With that in mind, I ask the Finance Director to update on the amount of cash on hand that we have to determine what we would need to do to restructure operations. Currently, I have an estimated $11,418,000 in town's cash accounts. We currently spend approximately $2 million a month in the accounts payable, payrolls, and funds to the school districts. If we continue at this rate, we'll have enough cash on hand for a little under six months. If we were to raise, we'd have to issue what they call tax anticipation notes, which is basically borrowing money until we receive tax funds. As for nonprofits, I'm going to be reaching out to a number of the nonprofit organizations that the town contributes to at the beginning of the fiscal year, and let them know that if the pandemic continues, we'll need to hold off on providing them with, you know, contributions at the beginning of the fiscal year. Traditionally, we provide them with their contributions right away, but if we're not going to have the cash flow coming in, I need to make sure we hold off on contributing, and it's not a good thing, because I understand that they're providing services to a number of the public, but we also have to make sure that we can provide the services that we need to as a municipality. So I'm going to explain to them that we have to hold off on some of the contributions if it happens. On April 8th, I issued an emergency order as it relates to access to Town Hall meetings and staffing. As everybody knows, over this coming week, we're anticipating the surge over the pandemic in New Hampshire. Miles indicating that this will be the most difficult week for us. As such, we want to make sure that the life, safety, and legal operations of all town government continues. After consultation with the Chiefs and the Health Officer, and as the Emergency Man Director, I ordered the following. I've restricted access to the interior of Town Hall to only those who work in the building. Emergency Operations Center for the town, and those who are still working are considered essential and are to work in their own offices remotely. Meetings are to be held virtually only or by telephone. Emergency and maintenance personnel may have access. As I mentioned, there's no scheduled meetings or gatherings, including group lunches, are to be held in Town Hall or any other municipal building, either by board or staff. The state has allowed virtual meetings and suggesting groups of no more than 10 in one place. With new information, it was found that it could be spread by contact with other materials, door handles, stair rails, and we need to limit the exposure of staff. I've informed that if the job requires you to interact with the public or staff by being close to six feet, a mask must be worn at all times. This does not need to be an N95 mask, and those should be saved for emergency personnel only. And departments have reviewed scheduling of personnel to limit exposure. For example, my office, I work remotely pretty much for the mornings and come in the afternoon, while the executive assistant works in the morning and goes in the afternoon, so there will be somebody here to operate the office. We're trying to make sure that there's no contamination. I do not meet, the Chiefs and I have begun to implement the continuity of government plan. This will ensure that emergency, not essential, emergency personnel can continue to operate who work for the town or school become infected. We've begun forced distancing and holding emergency management meetings virtually. So basically, the Chiefs and I and the Health Officer have not been in the same room for the last two weeks. We've only identified, go to meeting unless we are doing this meeting. And just in case we don't want to be infected, I want to try to ensure that there's somebody still functioning if one or more of us are infected. That's why I want the council to know exactly what's going on in Town Hall, because I'm still getting emails, and I want people to understand that this is not operations as normal on a day-to-day thing. I get emails, I mean, I want people in the public and the council to know that we're not dealing with the small things right now or the ideas for plans right now. We're trying to make sure that we have the staff working on-site and are dealing solely with the pandemic and the emergency situation. I spent over at least an hour, probably closer to two to three, on conference calls and briefings on the situation around the state. We then meet with each other to discuss what the situation is locally. We ask that you consider the request you make of staff during these difficult times. We're not going to pay attention to it as much as we would in normal times. It's just not a priority. We're not going to place a priority on mending ordinances or enforcing code violations, not life-threatening during this time. This is not business as usual, and I want the public and the council to understand that. I mean, we're doing everything from trying to secure a PPE to determining cases, to looking at what kind of staffing that we could have throughout the community to make sure that we're up and running over the next few weeks to months. We don't know. So I just wanted the council to understand that, and that's all I have tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Counsel Matthews.
Steve, is the continuity of government plan a public document that can be accessed by the public?
It is not.
The only other comment, must someone else have one?
You can go ahead, please.
I'll save this one for action later. I think it's more appropriate afterwards.
Seeing no other comments, I have just a couple that I wanted to mention. And so, again, I want to commend the Town Manager and all of the department heads for the work that they're doing in this time. The communication has been fantastic. And even just in the department reports, just the information that was included in that was appropriate and inclusive, and I just really appreciated all of the information that all of the department heads included in their reports and all of the work that they've been doing. You know, in particular, Chief True and Chief Malaski. I know how, just how intense. I can only imagine how, I don't know. I can only imagine how intense this time must be for them. So I just appreciate everything that they're doing right now. And so I have just a couple of questions. One, I'm just going to tell you what they are. So one is, you know, how, Steve, how do you anticipate us moving forward as a body? Because one of the things that, you know, as, just based on what you said, obviously, you have important things to think about right now. My concern is, this is going to continue for quite a while. And so at what point do we try to, maybe not business-wise, but do we try to continue the business of the town? I mean, they're just, even, it comes down to even just the letter from the Planning Board Chair, and like, how do we move forward on items like that? When do we start to think about moving forward on those types of items?
Yeah, that's a good question. My feeling would be, let's see where we are when the Governor's order is up in May 4th. If this is the surge that we're anticipating, we don't know what it's going to look like after May 4th. We, you know, we're seeing numbers that are flattening in New York City. We're seeing Massachusetts and Rhode Island spiking right now, because this is their week, and we'll see that for us next week. But I think that's a good milestone, is where we are at the beginning of May. And we're going to, we're trying to get, we're going to try to get back to business as normal for the council soon. I know you and I discussed, for example, doing the evaluation of the Town Manager. We have to do that. So yeah, that's the kind of stuff we will begin doing shortly. So, because we have a couple of weeks off now, because we have five Wednesdays in April, so we have two weeks off. So it would give us a little more time to figure out where we're going to be then for the May meeting.
Great. My other question about that is, I guess it kind of just dovetails into that. How, if at all, do you think that the council can support both you and the department heads in the coming weeks? Is there anything that we could be doing to help make it easier for you or to support you in any way?
Yeah, I think public outreach is key. I mean, it's, we can't get out as much. You're going to talk to people more in the community than we are probably, because just your relationships with everybody in the community. Any information that we can give you and make sure that the people have the facts and not misfacts or unproven facts that are coming up over the next few weeks. I can tell you that, you know, we have private conference calls to go over a number of things. What you hear on TV is pretty, is the same stuff that we get on the conference calls. We're just able to ask the questions right away, so we can prepare. There's not some secret meeting room where we know something different than what everybody else knows. So I think that's one of the keys that everybody should realize, too, that, you know, we don't, we have the same information as you, that everybody else does. We just, we discuss how we're going to attack it when doing that in protocols. And a lot of it is, also, we discuss the laws. But I think that's the key, is what can we do for the community during this time as well? So I think it's outreach from the councils to the people would be great.
Seeing no other comments, I do have just a couple more things. But if anybody wants to chime in at any time, please just give me a shout. One, another specific item in relation to the town is you mentioned a hiring freeze. And so my question is, how does that impact the Hiring of the Facilities Director?
Yeah, that's a good question. As of right now, it closed about a week ago, so we have the resumes, and we're going to review them and go through them. I've got to play it by ear. My sense is that that's an essential position, because we need to make sure that buildings are maintained during this. So I'm going to move forward with it. Issue is, how do we interview? How do we bring somebody in, those kind of items? So probably it's going to be the same situation, do it by remotely, and then whoever the successful candidates will bring in to the facility at that time.
So you are moving forward at this?
That's what I'm moving forward with, yes.
And then I just wanted to, one last thing, I just wanted to share that there was a call with Senator Shaheen today through the New Hampshire Municipal Association, and I was able to participate in that call. And, I mean, there's not a whole lot of new information to share, but it was still interesting to hear some of the questions that are being posed by some of our counterparts and some of, you know, the Town Manager's counterparts in other parts of the state. As people probably are aware, there's about, I don't have my numbers in front of me, $1.3 billion that are going to be, that will be sent to the state of New Hampshire. But it's really unclear how that's going to be distributed at this point to municipalities. There is no doubt, at one point, I messaged Steve and asked, what are we going to do about our budget? Because this is going to be a real concern for us moving forward. And so that was, like, really sort of the gist of the conversation today, is how are municipalities going to move forward? How are we going to access these funds? And then how are we going to manage eventual shortfalls that are just inevitable? So it was informative. There's, I'm sure that there are more, there will be more opportunities to chat with other federal leaders and to get more information. And I was really appreciative of the New Hampshire Municipal Association for hosting this today, so.
Just to follow up, I was on the call as well. And you're right, it's, we're hearing the money's coming. We just don't know how and when, and that's, that's, I'd say, our biggest concern. Is it going to be held up and conquered, and they determine which projects we get? That's a concern. Is it going to be by municipality size? Is it going to be by impact on the budget? We're not sure. I could tell you that we're already getting questions about, if anybody remembers during the Great Recession of 2008, there was a big push for stimulus for municipalities, what they called Tiger Funds, which were basically shovel-ready projects. And if you had shovel-ready projects, you were able to give money to help do that. We are submitting a number of them, including the Bennett and Sewell Well upgrades, new road, the entire reconstruction drainage system. And I've asked the Town Planner, since there's not going to be a lot of planning cases right now, that she's going to, by us, sort of pivot and focus on what does the CARES Act mean for the town? And how, where can we get the money, and what can we do in that situation? For example, you'll probably, you'll hear, like, Nashua and, I know Dover announced that they're giving loans to businesses in their communities. Well, they can, because they are able to administer their own community development block grants, where Newmarket cannot. We're not one of those communities. So we can't, just can't do that. I'm trying to see if there's any way we can, but they're allowed to do that under the law. But it's basically that, we heard the money's coming. Now we've got to read all the laws that determine what we can use it for. Probably even saw there's fights and conquered on who can determine it, whether or not it's the legislature or the governor in this situation. So I know the Municipal Association's been monitoring it, and we are as well.
Thank you, and I think this is an important time to highlight your association with the Municipal Association, because I think that that's important, and making sure that Newmarket's voice is heard.
And I was the past president of the Newmarket for five years, so.
Thank you. Counsel Matthews.
Steve, is it okay, can you share those projects with us that you submitted?
I don't have them in front of me, but I will get a list. We're still getting them together.
Perfect, thank you.
And Counsel Sanders.
Okay. Steve, I had a question. One of the department heads, the Chief Malaski, said that he doesn't have any facilities for his people to be able to shower and decontaminate after they've met with suspected COVID patients. Is there any way at all we could assist in that? What would that take? What would that mean?
Honestly, at this point, it's basically building a temporary shower. I could talk to the chief to see what he may need. If there's a tent or just a decon situation, we can set one up.
I would appreciate that. I have relatives who work in EMT and emergency rooms, and they're being allowed to shower and change before they go home, just for the protection of their families, and I think that's really important. So if you could look into that, that'd be great. Thank you.
So seeing no other comments, I will move now to committee reports. I don't know if there are any committee reports at this point. Counsel Matthews.
Sorry. I just wanted to comment on the department report. Is that okay if we jump back?
Oh, yep, yep.
Just, I noticed the Chief True had asked that they don't have a handheld disinfecting fogger. They're using one weekly. They're borrowing. Have they talked to you about purchasing one, Steve?
Yeah, we're looking at purchasing, as you can imagine, they're backwarded.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's already in the works. We're using the school districts at this point.
Okay.
Just to follow up on that, I know that there was, like, there was a push for PPE donations from the community, and how are we at with all of that at the moment?
Of course, you know, we always need more PPE. We're working with a couple sources, basically to circumvent the state and the feds to write to China to order our own. We're using our contacts that we have to, we think we're. Uh to, we think we may have been able to secure about two thousand KN ninety-five masks. Um we're just waiting for them to get here. Um as well as working with another individual to see what we can get for additional. Again, those are disposable, so once you use them, they're gone. So um. Yeah, uh we do have a lot of surgical masks, but always we need more. And those have been coming in as well, but we've been doing a lot of emergency purchases that way. So what we're doing is basically, I'll approve the purchase, we get them and. We have a separate account, so we can ask FEMA for the money later on. But anytime, anybody can donate, please do. Um, you know, we're still needing uh those kind of items, sanitizers. Anything that, you know, please call, uh, by our dispatch that they will be able to assist with what we need.
And just a quick question, when you say that we're trying to, you know, procure those items. So is the, is the state of New Hampshire giving any um?
They are.
I mean, like you're doing on, like we're doing on our own, or are we given?
Too full. If we need it, we can ask the state. But we're thinking as well that at some point in time, it may get thin there as well, so we're trying to get our own stockpile here. And since we, we had contacts that um with reliable sources there, that. Tried to use those and try to go through that. Yeah, the state's been great. I mean, to the point where I know there's a couple. Private medical facilities in town that needed PPE and they provided them quickly. The problem is, we're gonna stop burning through it within next week at a much faster rate.
Great, thank you. Um so then, moving on, so were there any committee reports? Do anybody have any? Uh Councilor Matthews?
I can just say that, I don't know if it's really a report, but um the April fourteenth Planning Board meeting was canceled. After consultation between the Town Planner Chairman and Vice Chair. Um the next meeting is tentatively scheduled for May nineteenth at seven PM. It's undecided right now, it can be virtual or in person. And therefore, all Planning Board members are doing a drive or bike by on the sites that will be on the agenda.
Madam Chair, I think your mic is not working. Madam Vice Chair, congratulations for taking over the meeting at this point in time.
Tony will pop back in and we'll be all right. All right, um, all right, so no other committee reports? Seeing none, okay. Doesn't look like we, old business, so we'll move on to resolutions, ordinances in the second reading. And sorry, I have to pull it up because I didn't have it pulled up, so one moment.
Two thousand nineteen, uh, two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-eight, Levelland, Levelland. I'm sorry, Amendment to Number One to the Two Hundred Thousand Dollar Grant Agreement to Reconstruct Levelland Creek Crossing on Bay Road in New Market.
Okay, so can I have a motion? Since I usually use the motions, can I have another person do a motion and a second?
I will make a motion to accept Resolution uh twenty nineteen, twenty twenty dash twenty-eight. Uh Amendment One to the Two Hundred Thousand Dollar Grant Agreement to Reconstruct Lumberland Creek Crossing on Bay Road in New Market.
Thank you, and do I have a second?
I second that.
Thank you, okay.
Sure, um this is basically Amendment to the Grant. As everyone knows, we have that large, um, successful project. Of reconstructing the crossing on Levelland Creek. This is. Amendment agreement to clarify the budget and payment for the annual environmental monitoring. Of the project, which is gonna be done by uh the Nature Conservancy, which we've agreed to. So uh basically, they'll be, we pay them and they'll be monitoring it for the next five years as part of the grant agreement.
Okay. All right, uh thank you, Steve. Is there, does anybody have any questions or discussion? Councilor Matthews.
Steve, what was the reason for the change in timeline going from the year one, three, five to year one, two, three, four, five?
I'm sorry?
So that the change is just where they're doing more frequent monitoring, so why are they doing more frequent monitoring?
I think just, good question, you know, I'm not sure. Have to find out, like, can't. Let me see if I can find that.
Okay.
I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Does anybody else have any questions or? Comments regarding the resolution? Think I see anybody else with questions, Steve, so I think we can go ahead and call the roll.
Council.
Hi.
Sanders.
Hi.
Hi.
Council Matthews.
Hi.
Council Burns.
Hi.
Motion passes five zero. Just to let you know, the, the chair texted me and she's trying to get back on.
Okay, all right. Hopefully you'll see her in a moment. And then she can take back over. Um, okay, so we don't have any resolutions in the third reading. Um so we are going to jump down to um Town Council to consider nominations and appointments. So it looks like we have one, and I'm going to say his last name wrong, so I am going to apologize right now. Thank you. So Steve Minatelli to be a member of the zoning board of adjustments. Can I see a motion? And a second?
Motion to approve Steve Minatelli as a member to the zoning board of adjustment for the term expiring April twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, and do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, okay. Um, thank you very much for um. And we appreciate that. So Steve, I think you can go ahead and call the roll.
Council Finch.
Hi.
Council Sanders.
Hi.
Hi.
Council Matthews.
Hi.
Council Burns.
Hi.
And I don't have my screen up. And Council Weinstein. We're voting for Steve Minatelli. They needed you unmute, unmute, hold on.
Hi.
Okay. Motion passes six zero.
I love technology.
Yeah, so we're on the, we're down at resolution ordinances in the first reading, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Um with this, um. What do you recommend, um, town manager? Do you?
I would suggest that we read it by title only because I'm also gonna ask you to suspend the rules to act on it this evening.
Great, so it's Resolution twenty nineteen, twenty twenty dash twenty-nine, and that is six million eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. General Obligation Bond Anticipation Notes for Water System Improvements.
And Madam Chair, I'd ask that the council uh move to suspend the rules to act on this this evening.
Um is there a motion? Council Burns, you need to unmute.
I'll put this down. I will make a motion to suspend the rolls.
Is there a second?
A second?
Thank you. If you call the roll, please.
Council Finch.
We discussed. Yeah. What, what is suspending the rules to put into action tonight, I mean?
Um basically, you're gonna vote on it this evening.
So this, so we wouldn't have a first, a second reading or a third reading?
Correct. And I'll explain, yeah. You want me to start again?
Oh, sure, please.
Council Finch. Council Sanders.
Hi.
Hi.
Council Matthews.
Nay.
Council Burns.
Hi.
Council Weinstein.
Hi.
Motion passes five to one. Um thank you, Madam Chair. This is so we can go out and get our water projects. If we do not do it this evening, we'll miss the bond deadlines. The loan deadlines and the low interest rates at this point in time. Um this has already been approved by the voters at the town meeting. Trying to remember this, the past year, and we're gonna be um doing that list of projects as we submitted. This is just our, the loan for our portion of it. As you know, we're getting a number of grants from rural development. And this, as I said, this has already been approved by the voters, so we, while you're voting on it, it. Really, it's not much choice to actually issue it, since the voters did approve it.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Questions? Council Matthews?
I guess, how did we get to the point where we're up against a deadline and not having room for the normal procedure?
Um basically, because of the, the fact that we um, one, we, the bond counsel, the bond attorney, who's, we hire separate. Was able to get the documents at this point in time, that she was not able to get everything pulled together just because the volume of her own. Pat, you know, work that she has, that this was it, because all the municipalities at this point in time are trying to issue debt. And we're all trying to issue it now before we know what's gonna happen the next couple. I don't like suspending the rules on these, as the council knows, but um it's very rare that we do.
Any other questions, any comments? Then if you go, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Council Finch.
Hi.
Council Sanders.
Hi.
Hi.
Council Matthews.
Hi.
Council Burns.
Hi.
Council Weinstein.
Hi.
Motion passes six nothing. Um just for the council, uh you do have a digital document going around that you should be signing. Um so once you sign it, please check your email. Uh I think there was one issue with one, I had it, there was a spelling error on email, so it got bounced back. You may have to re-sign one. Um but that's it.
You've mentioned um in your email that there would be another email circulating, and so I haven't seen the others email.
Yeah, I've got to double check with the attorney on that, whether I do have to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, no, sorry. I lost my place. Here we are. Um. So the next item on our agenda is um correspondence to the town council, and there is a, there is correspondence. And it's a letter from the Planning Board Chair, Eric Botterman, to the council. Steve, you wanna read that, or do we? You're muted. Steve, you're muted.
Okay, sorry. Here is Weinstein. As it was discussed at the joint meeting of the Town Council and Planning Board on November twentieth, two thousand nineteen. The New Market Planning Board is recommending that the council consider eliminating impact fees for the following reasons. One, given the school expansion is near completion, we believe impact fees will not be needed for a long time to further address infrastructure needs for the school. Two, water and sewer system expansion can be handled by Institute and System Development fee. And three, recreation programs in the town can be best expanded by current user fees system that is in place. In two thousand eleven, the Planning Board engaged the services of BCM Planning LLC to review the town impact fee program. A copy of the, of this report. At that time, there was a recommendation of the Planning Board to the Town Council that, one, the town, the town rescind the impact fee for water and sewer. And in their place, adopt system development charges for water under RSA thirty-eight twenty-seven, and sewer under RSA one forty-nine dash one. And or negotiate for water, sewer, highway, and stormwater upgrades necessitated by individual development proposals before the town. And two, suspend impact fees for the schools and recreation facilities. While the Town Council at the time did not take action on the recommendations, the issue continues to come up from time to time as waivers to the impact fees become. Before the board for its consideration. At the Planning Board meeting on October eighth, two thousand nineteen, the board once again discussed whether or not the town should continue to have an impact fee program. It was felt that due to the major investment the town recently made at the schools, there'd be likely no further major improvements. With the school enrollment declining, there's not a need for school impact fees going forward. The report also recommended that the water and sewer department have its own system of fees as authorized based statute under utility regulation for upgrading its facilities. At the meeting on October eighth, we agreed that the Planning Board would let the Town Council know how it feels about the impact fees. We appreciate you considering our position on this matter. We are more than happy to meet with the council at a convenient time and have. If you have questions or would like additional input. Sincerely, Eric Botterman, Chairman, New Market Planning Board.
Uh and thank you for including that in tonight's agenda. I had received that right before our election. And then I was away on vacation and then came back to all of this, and so. Haven't moved forward, and I guess I, I question. What your thought is about how we should proceed, or if we should just wait until, you know, I mean, obviously, we can't. Make any action at this point.
I wonder if it'd be, no, because we can't meet very yet, we can't meet yet, but almost beneficial to have maybe a subcommittee of two counselors. Two Planning Board members to discuss it and come back with a proposal. That way, um we're still moving forward, they can, we can set up conference calls or some kind of situation that they can discuss it. And then um try to get a sense of why they were there.
That makes sense to me. Any comments? Any thoughts about that? Are people comfortable with that idea? So if we wanna, um, if we had two counselors, I'm, I would assume that that would be the representative. To the Planning Board would make the most sense. And then another counselor, if, if there's somebody who's interested. I would, this would be a great time. I know people have a lot on their plates. I'm also available if people, you know, I'm available.
I can do it if, uh, yeah, I can do it.
Great, so if Councilor Matthews and Councilor Kuiper. Wanna take that on, and then do you want me to reach out to um Eric Botterman, Steve, or do you want to do that?
Um, yeah, you, you could, since it's between the chairs.
Okay.
Just CC myself.
I'll do that. Just making a note. Great. Thank you. Um so the next item is any closing comments by town counselors? Any closing comments? Council Matthews.
I just continue to fill out the census. Steve's currently gonna be washing a fire truck, so. Like, we're like one point two percent behind Dover, so let's, let's, let's not make him do it.
Awesome, thank you. Um I did wanna just mention, well, a couple things. So I had the opportunity. Part in, in, I guess if there are any, I don't see any other hands, so I'm, I'm gonna go ahead. Um I had the opportunity to take part in a roundtable that was presented today by New Hampshire Listens. And I mean, that's a, that's a group that has facilitated programs here in New Market in the past. They're affiliated with UNH, the Kersey Institute. And they do work throughout the state and throughout the region. Um so the roundtable today was about facilitating communication. Um in this atmosphere of social distancing and how to create community in that. It was fantastic. Um I know that I, I reached out to Steve um today. He had reached out to me several, a few weeks ago at this point, to say that, you know, the Dover Listens Group, you know, to, to show what they were doing. Um and I think that there is definitely some potential. And I think that there is definitely some potential for us to try to connect with the community, whether that's through the council or through another community endeavor. I'm not entirely sure, but I do think that there's definitely some room and some need for people to be connected. Probably in a lot of different ways, right? Like, I think that there are lots of venues where people can reach out and maybe through the council is one of those ways. I know I forwarded, I did like a sort of a quick Google Slides presentation that I put together. I'll forward that to the rest of the council. And I don't know if people are interested in pursuing that. I'm definitely interested. So on a personal level, whether that's through the council or not, I'm definitely interested in doing something moving forward. So I'll forward that to the council, to the, all of the the council. And then we can kind of go from there as to whether or not we want to pursue this as a council or pursue it. I'm, I'm happy to pursue it individually. And just as a way to, like I said, connect people, maybe through resources. The New Hampshire Listens had a really great format. So it wasn't, it wasn't open-ended. It was very specific. Like even the meeting today was super, it was 45 minutes. It was super short. It was, here you go. Here's a couple feel-good sort of things and a, and a lot of great resources. And a, a quick wrap-up and that was it. And it was perfect. It was the perfect length. It was really instructional. I plan to use it in a couple different aspects of my life. And and so I wanted to share that. There's also another presentation through New Hampshire Listens again next week, another roundtable presentation at the same time. It's 12 o'clock next Wednesday. And that is about reemerging into public spaces and how we're going to, how we're going to help facilitate that. I don't really know what that, what their presentation is going to be. Or what the talk is gonna be about exactly. But it'll be a great, if, if nothing else, it's a great group of people and it's a really informative jumping off a point for, for anybody interested in how we're gonna move forward from here. So so I wanted to make sure that I shared that. I will email everybody the link to the the slides that I put together and we can kind of go from there. I kind of think of it as sort of like our conversations with the council. You know, maybe we could do something along those lines. But some brief conversations via, you know, these platforms that we're all becoming very familiar with.
Out of curiosity, do they film it or record it? You know?
Mention if they were recording it. And I think that's kind of the deal now is that if you're recording it, you're supposed to say so. They didn't say that. They did offer their slides. So I can show those with you. And I kind of, kind of copied them. Adjusted them, but but used their format for sure. Any other comments? Then seeing none, I hope everyone is healthy and we are adjourned until our next meeting, which is May?
6th.
6th. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Have a good night.